Okay. City of Calamasa, special workshop of the Calamasa City Council and successor agency to Calamasa Redevelopment Agency. Welcome all on Tuesday, May 21st at 3:30. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cervantes?
We'll excuse him for school projects.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Councilmember Molina?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hewitt?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
And I'm here. Then we have City Manager Kobo. We don't have the attorney. We have City Clerk who decided to pay the honor of being here tonight. Finance Director Reed. Planning Director Lucia. Public Works Director, not here. City Engineer Thornton. Fire Chief O'Connell. And you want to go ahead and lead us?
Right on my record. Ready, you begin.
Go ahead and approve the agenda before the communications from the public.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For zip? We have no communications from the public? Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and give this to the City Manager and he can start it off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I am pleased to share with you today our first look at the fiscal year 24-25 budget for the City of Calamasa. So, before we get into 24-25, I want to go through some accomplishments that we've experienced in the last fiscal year. We've got a lot done and I think that it deserves recognition for the staff's hard work and for the council's hard work throughout the year. Then we'll get into the general fund. That'll be the primary focus of this presentation and then do, look into some of our capital improvement projects and then some future considerations. And of course, throughout the, throughout the presentation, if the council has any questions, please feel free to stop me and we can discuss those things, any questions, things like that. So, looking at our 23-24 accomplishments, the first thing that I listed there was the budget book that we adopted. So, that was probably the first thing that happened because that, as we adopted the budget, we enhanced our budget process. We added the CIP, more detailed CIP, made some, you know, updated color changes, font changes, things like that, just trying to make the document a little more presentable, easier to read and have additional disclosure, especially on our capital improvement projects. Of course, our new ladder truck was delivered and that was a great day for the city. We also did, made a lot of strides in community services and having special events for the public. So, Popsicles in the Park, the grand opening of Summerwind Park. And then we had Tropical Storm Hillary that our staff was very proactive in getting ready for and I think that did a lot to, you know, minimize the damage here in City of Calamasa. Of course, we had our fair at the Mesa View Middle School for the State of the City. That was a very unique event for the State of the City and we, that was a successful event. The resident, I do list the residential info overlay zone as an accomplishment and the reason I do is because obviously that was going to be a key component of getting our housing element approved and it was a great example of having a proposal, council taking feedback from the public and adjusting accordingly and coming up with a compromise that, you know, it's not, no one's going to be thrilled with it, but it was something that we could live with. And that was, that was a very good example of how the public process can work properly. So, that's why I list that as an accomplishment. Of course, the tree lighting was, was the biggest yet. That was a very big success for us. We've had, we had two animal control, spay and neuter clinics. We transitioned to advanced life support in the fire department. We had our Easter egg hunt and staff did an amazing job of shifting at the last minute because there was rain on the day of the event and they brought it here in the senior center and it was a really good event. They did a great job. I was on the East Coast with my kids unfortunately at the time, so I wasn't able to be here, but I got plenty of pictures and plenty of updates and from all accounts, everyone really enjoyed it. So, that was a great, yeah. It was, it was a great, a great, great event for us. We received $7 million in congressional project funding from Ken Calvert for three different projects. Members of Congress are only allowed 15 of those and the City of Calamasa received three of them, 20% of his total allocation for his entire district. So, that was very impressive. And that's in part to the work of the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem and pressing upon him the needs of this, of our, of our town and he really listened to us. So, it was great. We approved the contract for Mountain View Park expansion, so that will be starting soon. We relocated the Calamasa library while we, and shortly we'll be tearing down the old one and building the new one. So, that's exciting for us. We adopted our master fee schedule and cost allocation plan. That's going to be very helpful for us going forward. We conducted our public safety workshop a couple of weeks ago. Got some great feedback. Some of the things that were discussed in there will be added in the budget later. So, with the timing of the workshop being so close to the budget, we weren't able to add everything, especially due to dealing with the COP program and things like that, but we are going to be adding those things in the budget, probably sometime this summer. We'll be making some amendments to that. And finally, we approved the citizen recognition program. That's a project that the Parks Trails and Community Services Commission has been working on for a long time. So, just a lot of things that we've done over the last year and we're looking forward to continue that momentum into 24-25. So, let's take a look at our general fund real quick. We're showing still a net positive change to the fund balance before transfers. Of course, a number of transfers are for one time in nature, things being adjusted, things like that, but they're not structurally in the budget. So, it's not like we have to worry about having $2.3 million every single year in the general fund to transfer over. So, this really paints the, a really healthy picture of where we're at and as you'll see with 24-25, we're going to continue with that trend. So, I want to start with some budget headlines from around the state for 24-25. And this is just a handful. There's a lot more like this. The word deficit is being thrown about a lot in the state of California. I purposely picked cities that were outside of Southern California, so we don't, you know, point out any of our, of our closer cities to us, but we do know of other cities that are closer to us that are, that are facing similar challenges and having to make really tough decisions as a, as a part of that. Now, I like to point out though, that, and this is something that our city has historically done very well and this has started under, I think, Randy Anstein and continued under Bonnie and I think we're continuing that here too, is that sometimes the hardest decisions that, the toughest decisions to make are when you do have money, when you do have a surplus. It's easy to cut things when things are a deficit, but it's really difficult to exercise fiscal constraint and control when you have money and you have money to spend. And this city has done a great job of doing that. So, kudos to the council, kudos to staff for holding the line on costs and continuing to do so, so that we are not going to be a member of those headlines because when you look at our, our budget, we have once again a structural surplus. The ongoing number is the key number that we look at to determine whether or not we're fiscally healthy. And so, while that number is lower than it was in previous years, the, this presentation will paint the picture as to why and we're going to conclude with, is this sustainable? Is this going to, are the decisions we're making today going to be sustainable going forward? And a little bit of a prelude to that, the answer is yes. So, we will, we will look at that later on in the presentation. So, looking at revenues, as you can see, our primary sources of revenue are property tax and sales tax and property tax and VLF. I've explained what that is last year, so I won't go into that too, too much. But as you can see, a big part of is another, the little pink slices further broken down. I do want to focus in a little bit on the use of money in property. Part of that is, most of that is made up of interest revenue and our interest revenue has been higher than normal because of high interest rates. And coming into, into calendar year 24, it was expected that interest rates would start to get lowered by the feds. They were expecting to have about four cuts. We still haven't seen any and at this point, they're actually predicting that they may start cutting interest rates late in the year. So, that definitely has changed. It does, it does actually obviously impact the price of a lot of things, but one positive that it comes out with us is that it does elevate our interest earnings on the cash that we have in our bank account. And we've done some things on, on our end to safely increase our rate of return, purchasing CDs, things like that, that are carrying interest rates of highest 5%. So, we're trying to enhance that, but when we go back to, real quick, if we go back to this chart, that $125,000 in estimated revenue, that is interest revenue. And so, I do have a slide that explains that in a moment, but the key is, is that we're not counting on that interest consistently going forward. So, here's a little, here's just a kind of a, more of a chart, a table looking at the same aspects we were just looking at on, at the, at the previous slide, just showing changes from the adopted 24 budget to the adopted 25 budget. I do that just so you can see where were we last year, what did we adopt last year and what is, what are we estimating for this year and you can see where the changes are. A big change has to do with, I think that the building and safety charges, I have that as a positive, actually is, is actually going down, obviously. There are a lot of one-time revenues in that building and safety charges in 23-24 that were not included in 24-25. So, we're being conservative in that. We're trying to kind of use that as a baseline and then as monies come in, we may have to appropriate some of that to cover some of the costs associated with that because a lot of our costs with building and safety are kind of pass-throughs. So, our contract with Charles Abbott, who contracts for, who contract for, for those services, they get a percentage of the revenue. So, as that revenue goes up, our costs go up. So, we may have to make adjustments there, but we're starting off at kind of a baseline for, for this year.
What is VLF again?
So, VLF is vehicle license fee. So, we used to get that.
Sorry, my brain just, I was trying to figure it out and sometimes I can't.
I don't know what happened.
Sometimes I can't.
Okay. Ah, okay. Do I need to, do I need to scroll back through? Can I scroll back through? Hold on a second. Well, oh, there we go. We're getting back there. Can I go down? Oh, there we go. I'm going to go back to where we were. So, so vehicle license fee back in 2004, we used to get that revenue directly from the state and then they made a swap back in 2004 on a one-to-one ratio. So, for every dollar that they were, that the state was taking back in VLF, they gave it back to us in, in property tax. And the reason they did that was because the schools, the state backfills the schools because that's where majority of property tax goes to. And so, what they did was they did what's called a triple flip and it's just an accounting trick to increase what, on their books, what looks like more revenue for the state so they can enhance their borrowing. But really, it didn't really do anything because the VLF that they were, the property taxes that were given to the cities, they were taking that from the schools and then backfilling it with their own revenue. It's a whole complicated thing. But bottom line is, because property tax is a purely local government revenue. It never goes past the county level. And so, but the, the VLF was a state revenue. So, again, I think that, and that actually benefited us because from that point forward, instead of growing based on VLF receipts, we were, we grew on property tax receipts. And so, that means that property tax has grown more over the last 20 years as a percentage versus VLF has. So, if we had VLF, that number would be lower than it is otherwise today. So. And so, that's why the percentages are very similar between property tax and property tax and VLF because they grow at the same ratio. So, again, this is kind of just showing a progression from one year to the next. The first thing we do is we take out one-time revenues, then we show our increases in the various revenue categories to get to our estimated recurring revenue. And as I said, the one-time interest income is just the, kind of the enhance over kind of the baseline of, we have a total of $175,000 included in interest revenue in the general fund. So, we're saying 50,000 of that's probably ongoing. That's probably based on more historic interest rates, not necessarily the low ones we saw in the late 2010s, early 2020, but definitely lower than what we're seeing today. And so, property tax, I do want to cover a little bit more on property tax and sales tax since those are two biggest things. And I did show this slide last year, so 29% between City of Calamasa and then in Riverside County, there is a fire tax that they've, has assessed historically and given a portion of the 1% tax that, to, for fire service. In unincorporated areas, that goes to fund CAL FIRE and incorporated areas, that just comes back to the cities. And this is fair, this, these, these only apply to fairly new cities. So, for example, the City of Beaumont does not have this because they're a very old city. So, that, that tax was not established until after they were incorporated. So, we, as a result, we get a pretty good chunk of, of sales tax or, excuse me, property tax, whereas, you know, this can, this can vary from city to city. This was, this was set back in 1978 with the, with the passage of Prop 13. So, whatever agencies collected at that time, they got a share of whatever total taxes they were collecting and that was the percentage that was used. So, I've seen some cities have as low as 2% and then some cities have as, as high as 35%. So, it can vary greatly from city to city and there's no rhyme or reason to it. Now, these are a couple of new charts that I've added since last year because of our contract with HDL Cone and Corin, or Corn and Cone, I think, Cone and Cone, anyway. It's a related company to HDL that does our sales tax analysis. So, these are, we are, we are able to now get this data as well. So, as you can see, about 76% of our net taxable value is related to residential properties, but only 64% of the parcels are residential properties. So, that, a lot of that has to do with the mobile home parks. So, one mobile home park could be worth several million dollars and as we'll see in the next slide, that'll actually, you'll actually be able to see that. So, if I go to the next category, the next slide, I'll show the top 10 property taxpayers. Now, this, this level of detail is disclosable to the public. On the sales tax side is not. It is deemed confidential by, by state code. So, we cannot show this level of detail for our top 25 sales tax producers that we're going to see later. But a couple of these, I just wanted to clarify a couple of these owners. So, the Calamasa Retail Center, that's the marketplace at, at Calamasa. That's at Cherry Valley Boulevard. Jen SoCal is the Summerwind Ranch, the undeveloped portions of Summerwind Ranch phases two through five. Cedar Brothers is the Cedar Brothers here on Calamasa Boulevard. We know what plantation is. That's obviously a mobile home park. And then RGC Properties is that business park that's on Fifth Street where the tent shop is. There's a couple of churches there. So, if you go down Fifth on the right side, you'll see that. So, that's what RGC is. Next Gen Calamasa is Rancho Calamasa Mobile Home Park. Rick Orchut is the owner of the vacant property at Champions and Desert Lawn. Adachi Properties Management is the Tractor Supply. And finally, the George Gildred property is the Walgreens on Calamasa Boulevard. So, as you see our property tax trends, you can see the, the dramatic increase over, you know, from the late 2010s into the early 2020s, that was the development of JP Ranch, of, little bit farther down the line in the past was Singleton Heights and then more recently, Summerwind Ranch. So, those spikes you see between 2020 and 2022 are primarily Summerwind Ranch being Now, looking at sales tax distribution, we get of the 7.75%, we get a 1% of that. So, for every dollar you spend, that's a taxable sale in the City of Calamasa, we get a penny of that. Most of it goes to the state. But that, that part that goes to the state is a little bit misleading because a lot of that then gets turned around and put back to the counties to cover services that the state basically pushed down to the counties to provide services for. A lot of things to do with health, mental health. And when you see like county health facilities and things like that, that's what a lot of that's used to cover. So, there's a lot of that money, you know, a good chunk of that money is passed through to county, to the county. Looking at the, the major sales, the sales tax by major industry groups, 57% of our sales come from fuel and service stations. And so, and this is just indicative of our geography as a, you know, as being along a major interstate, you're, you would expect to see fuel stations have a significant portion of that. Obviously, our goal is to build and to diversify this amount and try to get it closer to what you see on the right, which is the state of California, more balanced. You know, this is just cumulative amounts of all of HDL's California clients. And so, it gives you a good representation of what, you know, kind of a mixture of the cities across the state. And like I said, we'd like to try to get ourselves closer to, to that type of mix because you want to be more diversified. You don't want to be running, just like in your investment portfolio, you don't want to be too consecrated in one area. I have seen charts like this that have significantly higher, like for example, if you have a whole, a fuel distributor in your city, you, you get a lot of the sale, you get all the sales tax that they do for all these card lock systems and everything like that. I've seen cities that, you know, at one point, fuel, fuel and service stations was 75% of their sales tax. So, they do well when gas prices do well and they, they really tank when gas prices go down. So, we're not at that point yet, but again, we'd like to try to diversify this a little bit with economic development over time.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Can you tell me what the two yellow high sides say?
Oh, that's busy, sorry. Yeah, that's hard to see. It's business and industry.
Business.
Yeah. Those are like business and business sales.
And the same thing as the yellow?
Yeah, they're both the same. Yes. That's a good question. And so, here are the top 25 sales tax producers. We have to show them in alphabetical order without dollar amounts due to confidentiality rules, so you, so no one knows exactly who's number one, who's number two on this list. But I think the thing you'll notice is the vast majority fall into those two big categories, right? The fuel and service stations and restaurants. And so, that, that would make sense. And so, about 86%, almost 86% of our point of sale, sales tax, that's excluding the county pass-through that we get for, for, from the county pool. Those, the two major categories in that are online sales that are not attributed to a point of sale in California and used car sales. So, private party used car sales are the two biggest categories historically in the, in the county pool. And if you go back to this one, as you can see, 14% of our revenue comes from the county pool. That has really gone up as a result of online sales. That used to be a significantly smaller portion, probably 15, 20 years ago, but over the last 20 years, that has grown steadily and has become a big, big part of everyone's sales tax mix. So, again, you can see the, one of the things that you'll, you'll notice is some, some big spikes between 2021, 2122 to 2023. Part of that has to do with the marketplace at Calamasa. The marketplace, let's see if I can get my, my microphone to not have static. It produced $364,000 in sales tax in 20, in the, in calendar year 2023 alone. So, it was up from 322,000 in 2022 and 121,000 in 2021. So, that marketplace really does drive a lot of sales in the city and we expect the commons, probably not on that, on that level, but we do expect to see a good little bump from sales, in sales tax as a result of that development as it gets built, which is right across the street from the marketplace. Couple of other revenue highlights, the Public Services CFD, which all new properties are annexed to as they are developed, contributes about $885,000. Those are to cover services such as public safety, parks, things like that. Now, there's other things that are listed in that and that, that has about 800, that, that contributes $885,000 to the general fund. And I had already gone over the interest income. So, now let's look at the expenditure side of the ledger and I, we start with this chart. We showed this chart last year showing, this, this is by department. 62% of our budget is related to public safety. Not a surprise, that is very common for most cities. You know, that, that it, it is, you know, usually the one, number one or number two priority for most residents. So, of course, that's going to be your biggest investment and that is probably our biggest charge is to keep our residents safe. In, in addition to what you see here for police, we do spend about another $195,000 in, from our supplemental law enforcement safety fund. So, that, our total police spend is about $2.9 million. Community development and engineering, you'll notice that those are relatively small numbers, especially on the engineering side, even though, you know, we do have a lot of projects. Those are charged to primarily, engineering is split between CIP and development. So, if there's a development project that has to have reviews, planning staff, engineering staff, public work staff, they charge their, their time directly to those so that they're paying for those services so that our taxpayers are not. And so, those are, that's why those numbers are probably lower than, they're not, doesn't give the true picture of what we spend on those because a lot of it's funded by other sources. But another way to look at these expenditures is by looking at it from kind of the personnel costs versus the operations and maintenance. And so, I broke this down because you see on the right side there, you see certain city personnel costs, 40% of costs of city are, are related to city employee costs, actual employees of the city. But that number climbs to 73% when you consider all of the other personnel services that we contract out for. So, police services, building and safety, public works, engineering, community services, that is part of Madi's time because she does spend time doing our community events, but the primary source of that is the senior center staff. So, that is what, what falls into those, those are the two things that fall into community services, contract staff. But that accounts for 73% of our costs. So, no matter how, no matter how you slice it, whether you pay an employee directly or you pay a firm that pays an employee, we're paying either directly or indirectly 73% of our, of our budget to services. And government is a service-based model. That is what, that is what we provide. We provide services. We don't build things. We build streets, but we, but we primarily provide services to the public, which is why that's indicative of that, that breakdown. So, several one-time expenditures that we include in here. We do have $16,000 for the election and related supplies. So, we do have to pay for a part, all cities pay for a portion of the election if they have something on the ballot. We are recommending a DIF study. We have not updated our, our development impact fee, NEXUS study in quite some time. We did the master fee schedule this year. So, we're recommending doing a DIF study to make sure that developments are paying the actual cost of their impacts. We do have $33,000 going through related to fire equipment. We are recommending a $20,000 for an update to our general plan safety element. That is required by law. So, we've just gone through the rigmarole of our housing element. We're not quite done there yet, but we're getting very, very close to bringing that for certification. But then right on the heels of that, we're going to have to do the safety element update. And then finally, we do have one-time costs for animal control, community services and some things for information technology for a total of $127,100. So, looking at our major recurring expenditures that are additional things, a big theme here is cost increases. That's what a lot of our requests are related to. Insurance increased by 20%, so we do pay for some of that out of fire. There's similar increases in the city clerk's budget because that covers risk management. An increase of 20% in our wildland protection agreement, that is basically to protect the city. Maybe if you can just give like a 30-second synopsis on what that is, Chief?
Sure. Thanks, Will. So, look at the wildland protection agreement as a, an insurance policy. We're in the wildland urban interface or intermix. Our houses are built right into the, the badlands and the, the base of the foothills. So, we have built the fire department with fire engines and personnel. Above and beyond that, we do not have dozers, bulldozers. We do not have 20-man hand crews or aircraft. And those aircraft that dump retardant in the event of a fire, one of those is, one, one drop is upwards of $100,000 or it can, can be that high. And we know we take multiple drops to We do not have twenty-man hand crews or aircraft. And those aircraft that dump retardant in the event of a fire. One of those is, one, one drop is upwards of a hundred thousand dollars or it can, can be that high. And we know we take multiple drops to paint containment lines and whatnot. So that, those services in the wildland protection agreement with the, the agreement with CAL FIRE. We get their support staff and we get that automatic response from the state of California. For those, for what's called the mutual threat zone, that everything that surrounds the city. We get those services out of the wildland protection agreement.
Is that, are you talking about the Foschek operation at San Diego Airport?
That's correct.
I thought that was forestry.
It's, it's, it's similar. It's online with that. The state of California has their own Aero Bureau, their, their air fleet. Though the forest service and through operating agreements, it, it's dependent on. But those working agreements between the, the federal partners and the state partners all tie into that initial response. And the W, and the WPA covers that. When we ask, they send the resources. And, and without charge.
I was just gonna ask you, is there, do you have to reach a limit of, of disaster, a loss?
No, if we get, if we get a fire in the canyon or we get a, a fire just north of you. If we get a, if we get a fire north of your area, we get an automatic dispatch. They send the resources, they send the overhead. And essentially, we have it contracted, they can help supplant our services. They take that. But I need to understand, explain that the rooftops, the residences are still the city's responsibility. That's why we have the fire department and we have that integrated operating agreement.
Thank you. I have a question. The protected lands that we have on Singleton and such, do they have to abide by clearing brush and weeds too?
I think that's a great, great question, Mayor Protem.
You don't know?
They, they.
Cause that seems kind of hypocritical.
That's, there's a, there's a huge challenge. We have to watch where we're cutting line, where we put hose lays, where we're driving our equipment. There's overlays that we look at and, and start working with geologists and wildlife folks. And, and take a look at those protected areas.
So are they responsible for that then?
I think that's a great question.
You keep saying.
I, I think that we're going to protect the houses and the life. And we have to be cognizant of, of all of the federal mandates for all the wildlife and those types of things. We don't get to go in and abate those areas like we have to in our residential areas. I hope I answered your question better.
You tried.
I'm trying to dance around it.
In the Cleveland Forest, we had guns pointed at us. Saying we couldn't go in there. You know, that, that's, that's how bad it gets.
So if it burns, are we supposed to?
It's a natural thing.
If it, if it burns, it, it burns.
Yeah.
If it burns, then nature's, mother nature's taking that course.
So we don't, but we would put out the fire if it caught on fire.
If we will do everything we can to do perimeter control, a, a state mission to be sensitive to the habitat.
Hope that's what happened to Yellowstone.
Good answer there.
On the police side, we do have a four, four and a half percent, percent increase built in due to rate increases from the sheriff's department. But we did offset some of that by moving our annual subscription for our flock cameras to our supplemental law enforcement fund, which is able to sustain those costs. So the net increase to police services, sixty-eight thousand dollars. For information technology, the primary driving force in there is our permitting software. And we had a related GIS update that we need to do to make sure that that software integrates with our GIS platform. It'll make it even more useful for us in the long run to have that integration. And a lot of those products are reliant on, on GIS. So it also, it also allows us to not have to do double work. Because we have a lot of our parcel data in there and the permitting software is largely driven by the parcel data. So again, we, we, those are agreements that are already approved by the council. But I still, you know, we, we still think that's going to be a great investment for us. And it's going to be a great saver for staff time. And it's going to be, make us a lot more organized as well. On our public works side, the primary driver, there is cost increase related to our contract with Charles Abbott. They have, they kept our rates down for a number of years below other clients of theirs. And I think the, you know, the, it's kind of come home to roost finally. And so we're seeing, we're seeing a sharp increase. And that's one of the things that why I, I, that I predict or I'm forecasting that these, a lot of these increases are, are, are sustainable. Because we, you're going to see, we saw a big lowering of our surplus from one year to the next. But a lot of it's because we're absorbing costs that we haven't been charged, you know, in previous years. So we're seeing these big jumps that we're not going to see going forward. So this is, we're talking about like a thirty, between a thirty and thirty-five percent increase in our rate this year. And so going forward, those rate increases, if they're, if they do have a rate increase, they're going to be significantly lower. And so the increase that we'd see in the future is going to be more related to inflation. So we're seeing inflationary increases and then additional costs on top of that, that are being, kind of catching us up. So the same thing applies to the community development side of things, which is a seventy-six thousand dollar increase. We are, have an increase for, for code enforcement. We are changing, we changed service providers for code enforcement. We, the council disapproved a contract with Foreleaf. Charles Abbott, that was not a core service for them, but they provided it to us at a time of need. And now we've actually gone out and got a, an outfit that actually does do that. That is one of their core competencies. So they have the, not only, they have, they have a good selection of officers. They also have the infrastructure and the supervision to make our code, I think that will enhance our code enforcement office, you know. That is not to take anything away from, from Ms. Johns. She's done a tremendous job for us. But she doesn't really have a lot of support because she's kind of on, on her own with, when it comes to code enforcement stuff. Whereas Foreleaf will be able to provide additional supervision and feedback. And can probably increase our ability to do code enforcement. Again, insurance increases were related to miss, risk management and other contractual increases. It's about forty-two thousand dollars in that department. And then with staffing, I'm recommending a three percent COLA for all of our employees. And then additional, there's, there's several other positions that we're, we're recommending additional increases because of, for equity adjustments. The purpose is to try to number one, keep up with inflation as best we can with living within our means. I think our employees would probably tell you their probably, their bills have probably gone up more than three percent. But as, as you'll see, the bottom line is, you know, we have to compromise somewhere, right? But we're trying to stay competitive with our neighboring agencies to not only attract but retain staff. We have a great staff here and we want to try to hang on to them and that's, that's the goal. And that, that kind of is the driving force for all of these, these, these requests actually. Because we're upgrading two of our, our employees. One from a maintenance supervisor to a maintenance superintendent and our associate planner to senior planner. It's a recognition of the, the job that they're actually doing, the duties they're actually doing today, number one. But number two, if, for whatever reason, if they were to leave the city, what would I need to replace them? And it, these are the levels of employees that I would need in order to continue on. So it's not just about the employees who've done, I mean, the people, the incumbents have done a great job. But it's also about if I lose them, what do I, you know, what do I need to make sure that we can continue that high level of service? We're also adding a maintenance worker too. Which will bring us a total, our, our crew to, to a total of five people. Which is going to be very important going forward, because as we grow, we've noticed the need for, you know, our, our guys do patch repairs for, for our streets, they maintain our parks, they maintain our facilities, they maintain our storm drains. They do a lot of work all around the city. And so, and they've been, you know, it's really hard for them to even take time off because of, there's only four of them. So adding this worker will, will really help them and that, and help their capacity. And we're offsetting that partial, the cost partially by removing a planning tech one. Our planning staff kind of got together and, and reviewed the service model and, but, you know, maybe we really don't need this position at this time. And then if we do get a spike in development, that's going to increase the activity. We have contract staff that we can bring in to, to cover that, that extra work. Community services, we've moved some of our costs from non-departmental to what we used to call the senior center. So now we're kind of, we're, we're branding that as community services. And we, that encompasses both the senior center activities and our special events. So professional services, again, you know, as I had stated earlier, Mahdi has, helps out with our, our special events. The cost, the rate increases going up therefore, we do have a little bit of an increase there. And then also additional supplies, we're starting to do more and more special events. So we want to make sure that we have the supplies to do those. Those have been very well received by the community. We've done a great job with those, especially with our, even with, I, I don't know, I, I think that they're doing the, basically the work of twice their size, I think. They're really doing that good of a job with these events and they've been very well received from the community and we want to keep that up. And then so just some other net changes of about two, twenty-eight hundred dollars in various departments for a total of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. So this is again, just a progression of, of expenditures from twenty-four to twenty-five. You pull out the one-time items, we talked about major recurring expenditures. Some other additional things in there related to salary. Another big one-time thing that's kind of moving costs from somewhere else into the general fund is that line that says move the lighting and landscape maintenance district salaries to the general fund. Our, our landscape, our LMD was established in nineteen ninety-one and there was no cost escalator built into it. So most properties are, are in the LMD, but it doesn't have revenue to cover its costs. So the, the general fund has, has supplemented that for a long time. But we figured, well, if we're already covering the cost of these salaries anyway, let's bring those costs back into the general fund. Cause we're just doing a transfer for the same amount. So this is really just moving things from the transfer line to the expenditure line. So it's money we've always spent, it's just being put in a different place. Our net change to the cost allocations, that's as a result of our cost allocation plan. And we were able to identify additional overhead costs that should be, should have been charged to other, other funds. And so that results in a proposed recurring expenditure of about nine point nine million dollars. We talked about the one-time expenditures, so we're just over ten million dollars for our proposed expenditures for twenty-four. Or excuse me, that, and, and thank you for pointing that out, this is different than what you have printed. If you're looking at this going, wait a minute, this doesn't match. We did find some additional things that we wanted, additional details we wanted to add. We made that change late this afternoon after Darlene had printed it and like, no, don't, don't worry about printing it again. We'll just change it on the screen. So I can share the, the final presentation with all of you, so you have these numbers. Another thing that I did notice is that those, the, the total proposed lines should say twenty-four, twenty-five, not twenty-three, twenty-four. So this is just again, a summary by department of all the expenditures, just a different way of looking at it. And then just for reference, we have our projected expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four, they're on the right side of the screen. Transfer is out, we are separating these out by, between recurring and one-time. The recurring has to do, we've been spending five thousand dollars to our CDBG fund to cover additional costs for CDG, CDBG projects. Those have been primarily projects that are here at the senior center, at the, in the civic center complex. Actually, when you walked in, you probably, you saw what happening right now. So that is a CDBG project, it's ADA improvements. And the other ones, the, going to the vehicle replacement fund for the fire trucks. So remember, we financed the new fire engine that we're getting, that's actually arrived. It's, is it, it's back there, correct, chief?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So if the council wants to take a look afterwards, you can go, we can go take a look at it. We couldn't bring it out here because of all the construction, otherwise we were going to have it set up in front. So if you want to take a look at it, you can take a look at it after the meeting. And the rest are one-time items. But that's a recurring item because we're going to be paying for that for the next ten years. So we want to make sure that not only can we pay for it this year, that we can pay for it in years forward as well. So again, but the net change before of our fund balance, we're still showing a structural surplus. But even if you take those two recurring items of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of this, we're still at a positive net change in fund balance. So, and looking at our, we're going to look at our total reserve picture at, at the end of this presentation. But again, our reserves are, are still very healthy. As a, as a point of reference, our contingency reserve is at thirty-five percent. And we're, we're currently more than double that for our fund balance. So do, I'll pause here, are there any questions on the general fund before we move on to the CIP? Seeing none, okay. So we'll move on to, to our CIP. Again, we do a twenty, we do a five-year planning horizon for our CIP. But the appropriations that are, that the council actually approves are only in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. The out-years are just for reference and for informational purposes. There are twenty-two projects included in our CIP, twenty of which are carryovers. We have two new projects, I'll talk about those. A seventy-three and a half million dollar investment over the next five years. And a majority of that is in our transportation infrastructure. So a big chunk of that is Cherry Valley interchange, as, as you'll see in, later in the presentation. We have about a twenty-nine, twenty-nine point one million dollars in carryover funding. So this is money that's already been previously approved, that are for projects that are ongoing. That, there's, there's an estimated amount in the, in the budget document. But that number will be refined as we close our books on, for twenty-three, twenty-four. And that will be updated in the fall. So again, you can see where a lot of our revenue or, or expenditures come from. This is just for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. The two major areas are transportation and storm drains. And that's a big deal for us because obviously we do have a lot of transportation needs. And storm drain is because, you know, we do have, you know, when we do have rains and we have all the canyons and stuff. It's important that, that infrastructure is working well. So those are, those are the majority of the spend for fiscal year twenty-five that we're, we're proposing. And the breakdown of the funding sources can be found in the document that is on page, page one seventy-seven of the agenda packet. That'll break down where it talks about all those other government agency funds. A lot of that comes from, from other sources, so.
Measure A is like the little yellow wedge, is it?
No, it's the, it's, it's actually, yes, actually it is, that is correct. Yeah, it's, it's kind of flipped that the purple's developer contributions and the measure A is that yellow, yellow wedge. Now that's not the amount of money that we coming, have coming in. I'll explain exactly what we're using the measure A money for when we get to pavement management. So, yes.
In the capital improvements program?
Yes.
There's a reference of successor agency projects? What, what projects are those, they're not called out on page seventy, one seventy-seven? I'll have those in the notes.
Success, which one is that? I'm not seeing that.
I might have read it somewhere else and it just, I just said successor agency project. There's, it's referenced that they're, are we still paying for those?
The only thing that in the, in the budget that we have for successor agency is to pay down any outstanding obligations, the debt. Yeah, so there's no, we don't have any funds left. We only get the increment that we use to pay the debt and it goes right back out.
Why did measure A jump so high in twenty-five, twenty-six?
It doesn't jump, that's just, that's just the, the source of the revenues. That doesn't mean that's how much is coming in. Because it's a cumul, it's a combination of the revenue that we bring in plus accumulated fund balance. So, and I'll, and again, that, I'll explain what measure A is primarily going towards pavement rehab. And I'll explain, I'll explain that when we get to that, that slide. So the new library, I talked about that a little bit when, under our accomplishments. So no new money to this, but I just wanted to keep that on the radar. The groundbreaking is scheduled for the end of July, so just keep that in mind for the new, for the new library. The groundbreaking is scheduled for the end of July, so just keep that in mind for the new, for the new library. And this only represents the city's portion of the costs. The county is paying for the majority of the costs related to this project. Recently, the council approved what is now called Mountain View Park. It's still, the monument sign still says Fourth Street Park, but that monument sign will be replaced as part of this project. And it's, again, no additional funding, this is all carryover funding. But this will start to get spent, obviously, as the project, as the construction begins in earnest. We're looking at a groundbreaking coming up here early summer. We'll give you more information on that when we have it. County Line Road and Calamasa Boulevard, this is, this is a project that we did get funding from, through Congressman Ken Calvert. We got $4 million for this project. We're working out the details with EUCIPA to secure the rest of the funding for this project. This will add a, I know, a roundabout at County Line Road and Calamasa Boulevard. This, this design and this particular, a roundabout was selected many years ago when we had first started the talks about County Line Road. It's, it's a, it's considered a phase of the larger project that we have going on now, but it's a separate distinct project that we're treating as a separate distinct project on this. We had federal money to acquire right-of-way initially, that's the safety lieu grant. And then the congressional earmark is going to be for construction. Calamasa Boulevard, or, excuse me, Cherry Valley Boulevard interchange. This is future, this is a $52 million project. So again, when I talked about this being the majority, this shows it. A number of different funding sources for this, for this project. A good amount of developer funding is coming for this. This is done through a TUMF credit agreement with Summerwind Ranch. But the majority of the construction will be funded through federal grants, which have yet to be procured. The federal government typically does not give grants for construction until you are shovel-ready. So the council, a couple meetings ago, approved a contract with MNS Engineering to complete the plan specifications and estimates portion of the project. We're going to start engaging RCTC in the next six months or so to start having, you know, having conversations with them to have them assist us in procuring federal grants for this project. But we, we really can't, we're still too early. If we, there are calls for fund, there have been notices of funding opportunities or NOFOs that have come out that this project would be eligible for, but we're just not far enough along in the process yet. But again, we're keeping an eye on that. And we probably, it will probably take some lobbying efforts on our part. Maybe a trip to Washington DC to meet with Department of Transportation to tout our project and make sure it gets the attention it needs to get the federal funding. But RCTC has been historically very good at this. The thing they have told us is, if you get a project shovel-ready, we will find you money for it. And so we are going to take them up on that, and we're going to, we're going to be utilizing them. We also, we are looking at them as an option also for construction, to manage the construction of the project. And that will probably help get funding as well. So that's, that's a couple of things we're looking at right now, but we're still not quite at that, that time yet.
I'll have a question.
Yes.
On the federal funds, are we, are we, are we allowed to apply for as many grants as we can? Or is there a cap on grant, federal grants that we can apply for?
There, I don't know, Mike, if you want to answer that a little more, but there is no cap on that. But you have to be careful of things that are competing against each other. In other words, all of them come with a match, so you can't get federal money to match federal money. So it can get complex. But there are multiple grant programs that this project could potentially be eligible for. Some are more competitive than others. So, for example, we looked at the infra grant program, which this would actually be considered a small program in the infra. Is that, do I have that right, Mike? Yeah, only two projects in all of California got an infra grant last year. So, and there's many, there's way more applications than there are. But there are no limits, we can apply for as many as we want. But the grant process is very labor-intensive. There's a lot of things you have to fill, there's a lot of paperwork that is done with that. So we have to be strategic about our resources and how we utilize them to go after those. We would likely have to bring in outside help to go after many, many grants like that. And you're throwing, it's probably not the best use of funds because, you know, you can try to apply for 10 different grants, but if there's only one or two that really suit you, you're better off focusing your attention on those. And because the effort that we need to write that many grants would, we would, we would need additional staff. We'd have to contract out for that kind of thing, probably. I don't know, Mike, do you want to have anything to add to that?
I think he covered it, I would just reiterate what Will said is, there is a local match requirement. And it's at least 20%. And you're more competitive the higher the local match you provide to a project.
And are these funds eligible for rollover if we have delays in construction of projects?
Once you're, once you're approved for a grant, yeah, there are processes for that. But you have to be careful about, about doing that too much. That's why, and that's part of the reason that they don't usually give grants until a project has a certain design percentage that it's really close to being able to go out for construction. Because once the grant is provided, they want the money spent. And there are limitations on some of these, some of these programs do have sunset dates, too. So you have to be mindful of that as well. You could be approved for a grant, but if you, let's say it sunsets in five years, and you haven't got the project done for whatever reason, there's, there is, you know, there is a risk of losing it. But they do allow for, you know, for extensions and things like that under, you know, extraordinary circumstances. So a related project is the realignment of Calamasa Boulevard at Cherry Valley Boulevard. We, you know, we, in order to make room for the interchange and because of separation requirements between frontage roads and interchanges, Calamasa Boulevard will be relocated to the east. We did get our RCTC TUMF a grant for this. And we do have to develop our contribution, so this project is fully funded. We do have funding secured for the entire project. And so we're treating this as a separate project, we're going forward with it ahead of the interchange. I think that that also actually helps a lot, a lot of ways for the construction of the interchange itself, so that you're not having these two projects happening at the same time. It's better to get one done, get that realignment done, and then follow that with the interchange. So with our citywide pavement management program, the fiscal year 24, 25 request is only for $235,000. So this is not obviously enough to pave any roads. So what is this going to be used for? It's going to be used for two things. Number one, we are due to update our pavement condition index. I think that when we did our last review for our last round of pavement management, I think we looked at some of these numbers and just didn't pass the eye test. So I think that some roads probably have deteriorated faster than the index was, what it was five years ago. Best practice is to update that every five years. So we do have money set aside to do that. That'll be the basis for our future paving projects. The second thing that we're going to do is we're going to construct a street inventory. And that would involve looking at track maps and historic maps from the county. We'll outsource for this work because we just don't have the staff to do it. But we have found that some of our, some of our streets that were maybe, that we wanted to do for pavement management are not eligible because they're not under street, under city maintenance. So when a street is constructed by a developer, it has to be built, and this is, a lot of this has to do with prior to, because when we, when we approve a project, we require them to build to county, to city standard. But some of the projects that were done here prior to our incorporation, some projects were not built to county standard and therefore not accepted into county maintenance. So we did not, when we inherited those streets from the county, that still prevailed. So in other words, those that were not in county maintenance did not come into city maintenance. And so therefore, Mike, if you can maybe explain that process and why we do not maintain streets that are not to city standard? Or it's not recommended, at least?
It is how the original street was accepted. So if it was built properly, then we would accept it for public maintenance. But if it was built, I'm going to say with a thinner pavement section that would require additional and future investment, then we would not accept that. I'm not 100% sure I answered Will's question, but there are streets we've accepted, there are some that we haven't.
Yeah, and so we want to just do an inventory, because it's not really, there's not a lot of consistency to it. There are certain just streets, just kind of randomly throughout the city, that were built that way. And so we want to get a complete picture of that, so that we know what's in city maintenance, what's not. And if there's something that we want to do and invest in that, or change that in the future, we'll at least have the information. We can have that conversations later on down the road. But I think it's important to have that information and then put it into our GIS system. So when I click on a street, I'll know exactly whether it's under city maintenance or not. It'll be very easy to tell. We also want to integrate the PCI information into our, into our GIS as well, make a GIS layer for that, so that we have that information. The more we can utilize our GIS system for that kind of information, the better. And that's typically what they're used for. So I want to be able to click on a street, look at its latest PCI, look at it's, whether it's city maintained or not. So that's the purpose of what we're doing this year. And then we'll have a much better picture of how we do our pavement management going forward. We were, we took advantage of having the COVID money, the, the, or, excuse me, the ARPA money that came to us, $2 million approximately. So this, this second round that the council approved recently for, that's currently in design, will utilize the last of that money. So we won't have that anymore. And typically, you don't want to, you know, probably $500,000 is probably your absolute minimum that you'd want to do a pavement project for, because anything lower than that, you lose economies of scale, your unit prices go up, a larger percentage goes to design and construction oversight. And so you just don't get as much bang for your buck. And so that's why, you know, going forward, when you saw the $600-plus thousand in fiscal year 25, 26, that's a combination of the revenue for that year plus some of the savings because we're not spending it all this year. Our funding fund balance is going to be about $320,000. When you add that with revenue that we're going to get next year, that puts us at about $600,000. We'll invest that into our roads.
So we don't have a number on how many streets yet that aren't under our maintenance?
No, no, we find those out as we, as we go out and actually kind of explore, okay, where, what's the PCI on these? Does this maintain or not? Where it came up was, we looked at one of the streets that we were, that we had picked, and it turned out that it wasn't under city maintenance. And that would probably contribute to, as to why it was deteriorated, because it wasn't built to standards. So that got me thinking, we need to get a hold of this. We need to have a resource.
We need to know.
Yeah, so that's why we're just going to do a deep dive and figure it out, and so that we have all that information upfront, so we know exactly what we're working with. Finally, Singleton Road Interchange, this is one we talked about last night. This project pending, the only thing that's outstanding now is the congressional earmark that Congressman Calvert has included in his requests. And so we did get another additional request for fiscal year 25. The Appropriations Committee Chair, there's a new chair of the Appropriations Committee in Congress. And they're looking to speed up the process of getting the federal budget adopted. He's actually looking to get it in front of Congress before the August recess, which is really the way it should be done. You know, the federal government has not approved a budget on time for the last at least 20 years. But I think in an election year, there's a lot of motivation from a lot of the Congress that they're going to want to get something done and be able to show that they got it done ahead of, ahead of November. So, and, and not to mention that these earmarks, I mean, they are, that is part of the process. They are, they are a political part of the process. And, but it will help us get a project done that we thought was going to be relying on a developer. Now we're going to be able to fund this thing 100% on our own. And it's, it's a great, it's a great, great accomplishment for us. Finally, looking at the two new projects, the first one is a California Street Storm Drain. This will resolve an issue that was brought to our attention that there is an inlet at the Californian Mobile Home Park that water flows from the street into the park. It's through a channel along the side. Originally, that, that water just ran off into kind of open space behind the park. But that has been since developed, and the water was redirected into the park to a drain in the park. 95% of the time, it's not a big deal, but when there's heavy rains, it does become an issue. So at first, we had looked at maybe making improvements within the park, but it's better to just keep that water on California Street, deal with it there, get it to the storm drain. There is a storm drain system on Avenue L down the street. So the plan is to have this project basically take that stormwater down to Avenue L, enter that system the way it should be, the way it should be designed. And finally, kind of a project related to the library. We're using our ADA, our CDBG funds to fund ADA improvements at the intersection of Avenue K and Calamasa Boulevard in front of the library. So we're going to reconstruct the ADA ramp. And that'll be done in conjunction with the construction of the library. So a couple of other CIP projects that are on the books here, some various improvements. This is, this senior center actually does, is a little bit older than the city, was built in 1989. And so it does have some improvements that are needed. So we have $300,000 to improve this facility. It's very heavily used, the activity has continued to increase here. So it's important that we continue to invest in this facility to make sure it's available for seniors for generations to come. We do have some fire department equipment and security items for $30,000. We are putting $80,000 aside for a new accounting software. Our accounting software is probably, what, 25 years old? And so it is time to upgrade. We anticipate that either we're going to upgrade on our own, or we're going to be forced to upgrade because they're going to call us, Tyler's going to call us one day and tell us that our software is no longer going to be supported. And that's just a matter of time, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So we'd rather do it on our terms, and so we're setting aside some money to do that. We're looking at various options. Tyler does have softwares that we can upgrade to, so that is an option. But I don't think anything's off the table at this point. If we find something that's going to be better suited for us and more cost-effective for us, we may look at that as well. The vehicle fund, we had $125,000, just, we just wanted a nice round number going to, as a transfer out. This will then be used to pay for the first lease payment. We're going to have a $121,000 lease for the next 10 years for the, for the new fire engine. And then finally, some replacements in our, some laptops and desktop replacements that are on a, on a regular cycle. So in conclusion, here's a look at all of our funds put together, all the revenues and expenditures for those. And kind of similar to last year, we're kind of on, we're kind of on balance here. We're, the money we're coming in, you know, we're not spending more than we have coming in. So our fund balance overall ends up being about the same as it is coming into this year. So again, continuing to be fiscally responsible, and this, this keeps us in a healthy position going forward. So looking at our reserves, our reserves primarily reside in the general fund. Last year, the council had put aside $75,000 as a reserve for parks and trails, so that's listed there. The capital, the capital projects fund, the vehicle replacement fund, and the information technology replacement fund, those are all funds that are, while they're not in the general fund, they're still, you know, kind of discretionary. And staff does plan on doing a more robust reserve policy that will integrate how this is funded, what the funding's used for. And so we'll bring that out probably later this summer. That'll actually better define what these balances are. And then also direct, you know, any surpluses that we get, how do we, how do we put those surpluses away? It basically gives staff a roadmap that is, you know, blessed by council so that we have a roadmap to, that when we construct the budget, we make recommendations that is based on a policy that the council has approved. So that's, that's the, that's the plan going forward. And so we'll bring that, we'll bring that forward at a later date, but probably not in the not-too-distant future. So when I talked about, is this sustainable? I wanted to look, I built a projection model to kind of look forward and see, okay, what are the impacts of the decisions that the council's making today on the what are the impacts of the decisions that the council's making today on the future? So when I look at the projections, I include things like revenue growth based on trends and normal inflation. So in other words, not counting on hyperinflation to kind of inflate our revenues. I want to look at it more from a more conservative, you know, baseline level. I also looked at wage increases due to merit increases. So we have a, a good number of employees that are not at top step. So after a year on their anniversary, they get a 5% bump according to our salary schedule. Those will taper off as people reach top step. So that's why you see it kind of going down a little bit in '26 and then kind of picking up in '27 and '28 because we'll have some employees, more and more, that are going to get to top step. It also does include O&amp;M increases due to inflation. But I do assume that on the expense side, that high inflation does remain initially and then tapers off over time as well. So we're being, we're not, we're not applying the same inflationary ratios that on the revenue side and the expense side. We're being a little, we're, we're applying a little more inflation on the expense side than on the revenue side, just again to be very conservative, to make sure that we're not overcounting things and, and doing, making too rosy of a projection. And this shows that we will indeed be able to sustain what we have. But it does not include things like growth from development. So property tax increases, sales tax increases. We talked about the commons, for example, that started, that, that is moving dirt out there again. We're hoping to see some progress there, get some, get some things built, get additional revenue. It doesn't account for any revenue that's going to come from that. And it also does not include future COLAs for employees. So we're approving a COLA today, but that's a year-to-year decision. It's based on the circumstances that we're facing. So I don't assume that we're going to do any because that would be, I, I don't want to be presumptuous, and that's a decision that the council's going to have to make at, at budget time every year. And just so for your information, a 1% COLA costs about $30,000. So just so that you have that number in your mind. So again, we talked about the reserve policy, doing some refinements to that. We do want to add a second workshop that's just focused on CIP so that instead of, you know, doing that all-in-one session, we can focus a little bit more deeply into CIP because that's such a big part of what we do. And so we're going to, we're looking at doing that maybe in the March, you know, early spring timeframe next year. And of course, we're continuing to plan for growth. You know, we do, I talked about it last year, we have limited opportunities to add staff just because of our space, but we're looking for, we're looking at options to change, to, to increase our capacity, to add people, not just for, you know, through revenue, but also through actual physical places for them to work. We could have the money for it, but if we don't have somewhere to put them, it's not going to help us too much. So I do want to acknowledge a number of folks, the Finance Committee for their guidance. I know Councilmember Cervantes is here, but the feedback that we get from the committee is always very valuable in shaping this, this, this presentation and bringing the budget forward, so we appreciate that. Celeste and Alana in our Finance Department, especially Celeste, she does a lot of the heavy lifting. A lot of this stuff, you see, I'm just, I'm, I get to present it, but they're doing the hard work. Alana is the one that is really the, the driving force of the design of this document, and it looks great. It makes it so much easier to read when a document is actually kind of attractive, and her design skills are just, are amazing. So we, we have so many multi-talented people here at the city, and that's what I think makes us so successful despite our size. All of our department heads, they all do work really hard to put their, their, their budgets together, and they're very conscientious in what they put, put into their requests. I, I rarely have to say no to their requests because they're so reasonable. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. They're not asking for everything under the sun. They understand our circumstances, and they understand what their needs are. And that's what they prioritize, they prioritize needs, not wants. So I really appreciate that. Delu DeOus is our, our financial consultant. He isn't coming on, on site as much anymore, but he still helps, he still helps us out in the background. He reviewed all this, ticked and tied, made sure everything, it makes sense. And then our administrative assistants for actually putting the document together. So they do so much for, for all of our staff, and so they're the, the friendly faces you see when they, when you walk into the building. But there's so much more than that. They do, they do a tremendous amount for the city as well. So I want to make sure I recognize them. So in conclusion, we're looking for direction. If there's any changes that are made as a result of this discussion, we'll, we'll of course incorporate those. And our goal is to bring this back for June 3rd adoption. So that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to, myself and staff are available for any questions you have.
Questions?
I, I do. When would it be appropriate to bring future items for consideration to the council? Like adding a program for city support? Like I was thinking PASCOM is a big resource for our city. We really, we used to have a public safety commission, if I recall, that was the name of it, some years ago, and it was disbanded. But I, I see a real need for that. We have a radio club that, you know, the ham operators, the PASCOM group that is in our city, the members of it, they, they work a lot in the past cities. But I think we should support them because they really provide public safety support, emergency response. I'd like to see that, us maybe use them more and, and make them an official resource of the city.
So on that, I, a couple of things. Number one, I, I think, correct me, Mayor and Darlene, we used to provide funding to them. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, there wasn't much.
Yeah.
And they got grants, I'm, I'm, you know, from, at one time they got a big grant for, for the mobile parks to get generators. But that was a long time ago as well.
Yeah, they, they give them all this, this good stuff. Nobody maintained it, nobody checked it, nobody knew how to use it. All turned into junk.
Well, it's gone. It's gone. They don't know where it's at.
Well, and I think that, you know, in our public safety workshop, that was one of the things that we had talked about, right Chief?
Yes.
The key is right here.
Yeah. So we, we've got a plan going forward to answer your question, and a comprehensive plan. And we'll talk more about it in the, the meetings to come. But the concept of community risk reduction, we, we covered that very heavily in the public safety workshop. I just attended the International Association of Fire Chiefs Conference in Phoenix last week specifically for the Community Risk Reduction Leadership Workshop. So what that looks like going forward, I've been working with Evan and City Manager Will, taking a look at, at how do we redefine, take care of those resources, reinstitute some volunteerism to answer your question directly for PASCOM. Either Jerry Rodriguez or myself, where we, we make it a point to attend those meetings. And we're trying to breathe some life back into those programs so that we reach back into the mobile home parks, as you identified, and then bring our CERT program back together to tie in with our ham radio club. And, and we have a force multiplier tying into our City Emergency Operations Center. So city staff as of last week, YESA's attending ongoing training with some of the ICS qualifications. I've talked about it with Celeste and our Public Works folks, and, and we're putting it into play. It's, it's a big undertaking to get back there, but it is a priority. And I just kind of want to recap on the whole community risk reduction thing. It's nothing new. Folks have been hearing about problem-oriented policing or community-based policing. Community risk reduction is the same thing. I'm going to, you know, make it funny, but you know, the nozzle, the nozzle draggers, the hose draggers, and the cops are working together to take care of all the baloney that we deal with in the city. And that's the bottom line. Getting ahead of blight and, and doing what we have to, not passing, it's, it's not stepping past a problem that we can solve for ourselves. Training our young folks that as they come on, they see something, say something, deal with it, stop and ask, and, and make our community nice. And, and that's the goal. I, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, I just want to just add to, you know, we do have several organizations that are supported under our Community Services Budget, if you look at that department. I think that, you know, obviously if, if council members have requests, you know, obviously this is part of, it's part of this workshop is to talk about those things. But also maybe in the future, I can have a mechanism where, you know, I think we're going to have that March meeting. That might be a good opportunity to add, kind of like at the end, if the council members want us to look at anything that we can bring back for, you know, that, because that'll be before we meet with our Finance Committee, and so it'd be good to bring anything like that, that the, that council members want us to look at. We bring forward to the committee, kind of edit through there. Or, or, you know, the other thing is, is that, you know, as a council member, you can count, you can contact, has to be, you know, for, because the Brown Act has to be a one-way communication, but you can, you can also, you know, send something to the committee saying, hey, can you guys look at this? That's another option that you have as well. So there are multiple opportunities, I think, and then maybe we can make it a little more formal process if the council would like. But that would be, that would be my suggestion for that.
I just have one that you want or desire. We have a real difficult time reaching everyone in the, in the community because we have a lot of new residents. They don't come to council meetings, they don't all get the newspaper, we don't have a reader board. So I was wondering, and, and I'm thinking back to, I don't know if it was our State of the City or our Earth Day. We had great setup for our programs to see that the staff worked so hard, but not a lot of people came. And so I was wondering if we could get simple banners, like one on the either side of Calamasa Boulevard interchangeable for you to put the, the name of the event and the date to hang across the boulevard to let people know that there's something coming up, that that might be a way to get people to get, to come to our, our events because I think we're lacking in that. I can't think of any other way other than getting a, an expensive reader board, which, you know, maybe down, maybe down the road. But I think that's a simple, not too expensive, um, um, way to get information out to people. Just a thought.
That's probably a policy to discuss between the council.
It's a safety problem too, and that's where these guys will get very involved. Because that's been talked about before.
It's a good idea though.
Yeah. But it's.
I, I think it'd be, I mean, like, we didn't have very many people come, but I think we need to advertise it a little bit better and maybe get some flyers made up and, I don't know, something like that.
I had mass mailings during campaign.
Um, the vehicle replacement fund balance, I kind of wanted to look at the COP getting another vehicle.
So, yeah, so we, we're, it's not included in the, in the budget right now, but that is something that we're going to bring back. I'm looking at, I think that the first priority is going to be replacing the existing vehicle. And then depending on interest, we could always add a second vehicle later. The balance, you know, is part of a plan for vehicle replacement in general. I put together a schedule, and it's probably not, it's probably not at the, the target balance yet, but it's actually, you know, made more progress than I had, had anticipated, so that was good. But, but yeah, that, that is part, that is definitely something we're planning on doing. So as we, as we develop the program, we want to, we want to revisit the guidelines and make, and then probably expand on the duties as well because we're going to integrate, obviously, some things related to code enforcement, fire, things like that. It's more of a see something, say something. We don't want them doing any enforcement, obviously, but, and that's something that, that's, that is one of the challenges of those programs is that you got to make sure that the folks that are involved with it understand what their role is. But to answer your question about the vehicles, yes, we will be able to do that, and that's going to be our, that's going to be our priorities. We're going to look at replacing the one we have. And then if we get enough, you know, that it warrants a second vehicle that we'll need on a rotation, we'll, we'll add one.
Just dreaming on, on notifications and, uh, you know, people have a habit of instantly, you can send out mailers all you want. They don't look at them. You know, it's, I'd, hell, I, I get probably two inches of paper put in my mailbox, and do I look at any of it? No, it goes around file.
Oh yeah, I would, I would think a mailer, but maybe pin it up on a board somewhere around town, put them in Denny's and put them.
Well, it's just, just getting people interested in different things. It's, uh, we'll have to just give that some thought, you know, so.
Yeah, and I know, I know that there's already things that some of the staff has been looking at to help, help with that. I think some of our events, you know, the, the attendance has been affected by weather. It's either, you know, hot or rainy or, you know, that's, that's affected things as well. But yeah, I think that we're, we are, we are certainly trying to get ahead of those things. And every time we have an event, we, when we, when we kind of do our recap, our debrief, that's always something that we talk about, how can we get the word out better? So it's something that we're already looking at, and so we appreciate the feedback that kind of, kind of, kind of gives us confirmation that we're, we're heading in the right direction. So we appreciate that.
We had a lot of people for Easter, and the trunk-or-treat thing was a success. I think if you just did it like kid-arranged, and it was, you know, I just think it was the first year and people were kind of like, had other things going on. I think on Saturdays, there's a lot of.
There, there, as, as a father of three at that age, yes, I can testify there are, there are a lot of things happening.
So we might have to think of another day when they're not, you know, going to all that stuff, so.
Yeah, we, I, I, I was probably, I was wondering if it's premature to say this, but we are working on partnering with the Supervisor's Office to provide funding for movies in the park. So we do plan on doing two movies in the park this summer at Summerwind Park. And I think that we're going to try to make that an annual thing. And then when the park is done here at Fourth Street, when that expansion's done, then we'll rotate. We'll have one part, we'll have one movie at, maybe one or two at, at Summerwind, maybe one or two up here at, at Mountain View. So that's one of the things we're looking at as well. So again, to, you know, to your point. And maybe doing those like on a Friday night. So I think that would be probably, we'd probably get more attendance with that.
What kind of movies are you going to get?
Kid movies.
Family-friendly, definitely.
Well, no, it's, in college, you know, I ran all the dormitories. Well, I, I contacted all the manufacturers and, and different people. You can't imagine, uh, what's out there as far as what they will donate for movies. You know, and it's, uh, I was surprised, all the way down to Indianapolis Raceway, you know, and it just, uh, there's a, there's a lot of things out there, and it's a possibility to, you know, the kids' movies, yes, that's fine. I like kids' movies. I'm sorry. They're my mentality.
Well, I, having, again, having those kids, I, I, you know, watching them grow up and watching their movies, the kids' movies these days are pretty good, actually. They are. But no, I think that, and that's, and a lot of communities have had a lot of success with the, with those type of events. They're, they're very well-attended, and we're looking, we're looking to partner with another agency to do that because they have the manpower and they have the contacts to be able to put the, you know, burnt the screen, get the licensing, because you have to license the movie and things like that. So there, we have, we have someone we're going to be working with, and we have funding available for it as well. So we're excited for that.
Well, doesn't the library system always also have licensing access?
They do, but it's a different type of license because it's usually for borrowing movies.
Correct.
But for, and they can show it, but, but in an event like this, because it depends on the number you expect. So for those outdoor showings, they do have different types of licenses, so.
Seems like they used to do that here at Town Center, the, uh, the, you know, at one time, the Chamber used to do something, and they got in trouble.
We're going to make sure that, we're, we're going to marry, make very, very careful to be, make sure we're doing on the up and up, yes.
Yeah, we don't really have a lot of entertainment for our kids and families. That'd be wonderful to do that.
That's because they're at home playing games on video things instead of going out there and playing. Okay, is there anything else?
I'd like to just commend the staff for this excellent package. It's easy to read, you can find everything, just, it's fabulous. Thank you. Very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. Thank you guys.
Okay, well, I'm going to shut this thing down at, uh, 4:59.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hey, you were right on target when I asked you that yesterday. I said, yeah.
And thank you for, you know.